All right, y'all need a sound check? Everybody good? Mic check. Everybody all right? Okay. We will begin. Good morning, thank you for coming. My name is Chris Turner. I'm Chair of the Texas House Democratic Caucus. And today, the Texas House Democratic Caucus celebrates an incredible achievement. Twenty-five days ago, we took bold action. We left the state of Texas to deny Texas Republicans the quorum they needed to pass the regressive anti-voter legislation, a bill that's entirely driven by Donald Trump's big lie. Today, shortly, the Texas Legislature will adjourn signing die, the end of this legislative session. And we will have killed that bill for this session, as we set out to do 25 days ago. This is a victory for Texas voters. But we know, we understand, the fight continues. We will never stop fighting Texas Republicans' continued efforts to roll back Texans' freedom to vote. These bills are just the latest in a systematic attack by Trump Republicans in Texas and across the country to undermine our democracy and silence the voices of the people. We left Texas to stop House Bill 3, but we came to Washington DC to urge Congress and the administration to take immediate action and pass sweeping voter protection legislation to safeguard access to the ballot box for all voters in Texas and in every other state in this country. Our resolve and hard work over these past few weeks has resulted in clear action and clear progress here on Capitol Hill to accelerate that legislation. We are closer, much closer than we were a few weeks ago, to passing the For the People Act and the John Lewis Voting Rights Advancement Act, vital legislation that protects the freedom to vote. In fact, this very hour shortly, the US House Subcommittee on Elections is hosting a virtual press conference to share its report supporting the John Lewis Act and the full restoration of the Voting Rights Act. Today is not only the last day of our special session in Texas, it is also the anniversary of the signing of the Voting Rights Act of 1965. Fifty-six years ago today, President Lyndon Johnson, a Texan, signed the Voting Rights Act into law. And when he did so, he said this: "The vote is the most powerful instrument ever devised by man for breaking down injustice and destroying the terrible walls which imprison other men because they are different from other men." Today, we are honored to be hosted here at the US Capitol by Senator Jeff Merkley of Oregon. Our caucus met with Senator Merkley in the first few days that we arrived here in Washington to make our case. And the Senator has been an unyielding ally in the fight for voting rights, and he's a champion for the freedom to vote. He is in every single conversation that's happening right now around federal legislation, and he is leading the effort to make it happen. And so, we're thrilled that he has joined us this morning, and I'd like to invite him to say a few words. Senator Merkley.
Chris, thank you very much. I am so proud to stand with these Texan freedom fighters who are standing up for the principle of every American having full access to the ballot, every American having a voice in the future of their state, the future of their country. You know, they've been threatened with arrest, they've been threatened online, they've been insulted, and through it all, they have stood strong for the vision of an America where we defend the freedom and right of every American to vote. Fifty-six years ago today, 6th of August, a celebration, a celebration that finally we'd secured for all time, that right. And yet, here we stand today, half a century later, still in this fight. This is not a moment I could ever have anticipated when I joined the role of running for, to be a state representative in Oregon and to run to serve in the Senate. I thought this is a fight we had secured, that we had so established, that understanding. But the events of the past four years have brought with us a new infection. Yes, we have the pandemic infection challenging our health, but we have voter intimidation and suppression as a virus challenging the health of our democracy. Well, these Texan legislators, they have come here with their voice not just for freedom and rights of Texans, but the freedom and rights of every American in every state to play a full role in the course of our states and of our nation. You know, Johnson, President Johnson said, "It is wrong, deadly wrong, to deny any of your fellow Americans the right to vote." Those words have been forgotten across this land, and we are here to say them again. It is wrong, deadly wrong, to deny any of your fellow Americans the right to vote. He continued that there is no issue of states' rights or national rights, there's only struggle for human rights. You know, they say everything is bigger in Texas, but what is bigger than defending our national right to vote and our freedom to vote? They say, "Don't mess with Texas." Well, I say, "Don't mess with these Texan legislators who are defending the right to vote in their home state." This battle has gone on through the course of our history. We know that our original constitution was not perfect, and we went through the 13th and 14th and 15th amendments, the 15th securing the right to vote regardless of race, the 19th amendment, which happened in my father's lifetime, establishing the right to vote regardless of gender, the 1924 Indian Voting Rights Act to make sure American, Native Americans, had the right to citizenship and to vote. And then, 1965, 56 years ago today. Well, right now in Texas, there is a governor, and there are state legislators who are trying to make it harder to vote by mail and harder to register to vote and easier to intimidate people at the polls because they know there's this time-established formula for targeting voters, a formula that goes back with a deep racist history in our country. You can reduce the number of precinct voting locations in places you don't want to vote. You can reduce the number of workers. So, there are long lines. You want people to vote? Make sure there's a short line. Make sure you don't want them to vote? Make sure there's a long line. Make sure the voting machines break down. Make the location change from year to year to confuse people. Put out false information about where they're... It is fundamental that the antidote to these strategies to target Americans are early voting and vote by mail, the ability to register without obstruction, and those things are all under attack across this nation in a very targeted, laser-targeted strategy at specific communities, at inner-city communities, poor communities, communities of black Americans, of minority Americans, of Native Americans, and of college students. So, the For the People Act takes on three forms of corruption in our country. And the first is gerrymandering. Right now, there's a conversation among Republicans about how they can gerrymander enough additional seats so that equal representation is shattered and destroyed across this country, and the House of Representatives, right behind us over here, can be rigged for the powerful. The For the People Act says, "No, we are going to fight for equal representation with national standards for districting." And then, we have billionaires buying elections with dark money. It doesn't matter whether you poll Democrats, Republicans, or independents, they all say, "No, in a democracy billionaires should not be able to buy elections." And the For the People Act ends the role of dark money. And most important, it protects the pulsating heart of our system of voting, the ballot box for every single American. So, I am so inspired by the voice that these Texans have brought here to Washington DC. That voice has continued to reverberate. My colleagues and I have been meeting, working to lay out that bill that can get majority support in the Senate and that can find its way onto the House, onto the Senate floor and on its way to the, back to the House of Representatives and the Oval Office. We must get this done because it is an oath of office that we took to defend the Constitution of the United States of America, and that demands that we defend the ballot box for every single American. I am delighted to introduce the Dean of the Texas Delegation, Sanfronia Thompson.
I want to tell you that 56 years ago was one of the most delightful moments in my life. It was delightful because I remember the passage of the Voters Rights Act. And it was always a time that I felt like that the poll tax would be dead, but I had to buy a poll tax in 1966 in the state of Texas to continue to vote. It finally died out. Let me tell you what, I know that when light is shined on, history has shown us that when the light is shined on darkness, things are revealed. We've been able to derail this bill that the Republicans have had to suppress our vote in Texas for now. And we have done it by sticking together and coming here and knocking on doors, and the Congress, and the Congress persons here have been gracious enough to open them. We found a machine in the bills that were here that was dormant, but the 57 spark plugs from Texas screwed themselves into that machine and lit it up. And we brought the light, the need, across this country, not just for Texans to be able to cast a vote, but for every American to cast a vote in this country without fear and without intimidation. We may not have the numbers in the Texas House, but we got the numbers of the people of the United States of America who are rising up, and they are recognizing the fact that voting is a right and not a privilege in this country. And we are not going to continue to be suppressed and denied the right to cast our vote. We're going to fight. But more importantly, we are here not only to do just that, but we are here to put this struggle to rest once and for all. It doesn't make sense for us to continue in this country as Americans to keep fighting the same fight year in and year out because someone wants to exploit other people for their political gains and agendas. We stuck together, we didn't think we could do it, but we did. And we have walked these halls of Congress, and we have walked these steps across here to every office that we could, and we've made our case. And we believe that when history is written, it will be written about the 57 spark plugs that God chosen from Texas to light up America and let them know that this is a right that they have and it's worth fighting for, and we're going to do just that. We're going to fight today, we're going to fight tomorrow, and we're going to fight until this problem is solved. And that is why we're going to fight here in Congress. And if we have to come back here, I'm not saying we leaving, but if we have to come back here, we are willing to fight. We are willing to risk whatever it takes in order to preserve the rights of our own selves to vote, but those who will be coming behind us. And now, I am delighted to bring to the podium the Chairman of the Mexican-American Caucus, my dear friend, Representative Rafael L. Anchiya.
Gracias, representante Thompson. Yo voy a probar unos comentarios en habla hispana, si me permiten. Sé que hay medios aquí. Quiero ofrecer algunos pensamientos sobre el día de hoy. Estamos declarando varias victorias. No solamente matamos la propuesta antivotante del estado de Texas, pero hemos movido no solamente un congreso, pero un país en este movimiento que se han juntado gente de fe, gente electa de por todo Estados Unidos, representantes, senadores, y han venido aquí al Capitolio para promover una ley que protege la libertad del voto, no solamente para millones de texanos, pero para millones de americanos. Y eso es lo más clave de hoy. Otras victorias obviamente ya han sido señalados por mis colegas. Mantenimos 57 demócratas juntos, unidos, para llegar a nuestras metas. El presidente de la Cámara de Diputados, Dale Phelan, él envió un avión para venir a recoger los que querían regresar, y ese avión regresó vacío. Porque aquí estos representantes, que cuando los miras, representan sí, no solamente las imágenes del estado de Texas, pero el poblado americano, el tejido americano. Venimos aquí, no solamente sacamos nuestras metas, pero hemos continuado... No, that's okay. Hemos continuado un proceso que se había parado aquí. Ya gente no tenía esperanza para una propuesta de ley nacional que establecía normas para proteger el voto, pero con el esfuerzo de las personas que están aquí, representantes de Texas, ahora sí que tenemos esperanza de otro procedimiento, de una nueva etapa en esta batalla. I just want to offer up a couple of comments in English as well. I'm Rafael Anchiya, Chair of the Mexican-American Legislative Caucus, the oldest and largest Latino Legislative Caucus in America. We have over 40 members in the State House and a great part of this House Democratic Caucus. I just want to underline two very important victories that we have scored. The first is that we killed the anti-voter law HB 3 in the Texas Legislature, and nobody thought we could do it, right? Even the Speaker sent a private plane up to Washington DC days after we got here to pick up Democrats and bring them home, and that plane returned empty, okay? Because we had 57 Democrats who believed that this cause was a good cause, that this cause was a righteous cause, and that this cause was an American cause, a cause that we have seen throughout the history of this country, a cause that we have seen people bleed and die for, and a cause that we knew we must continue during this very precarious time in our history. I mean, I don't need to remind everybody here that we have gone from an attempted coup d'etat on the 6th of January that was fueled by the big lie, where people tried to stop the peaceful transfer of power in this building behind us, Lynch, the Vice President of the United States, and who resulted in the deaths of many Capitol Police who, like us, took an oath to preserve and protect this democracy. And you can draw a straight line from that insurrection and that treason to the anti-voter bills that we're seeing across the country. And when the big lie darkened the door of the Texas Capitol, we not once, but twice, broke quorum to stop the big lie and stop these bills and rekindle voting rights talks here in Washington DC. I'll just say one last thing about that. We, it was not until we broke quorum that Republicans turned around, changed their tune, and agreed with us. It was not until we broke quorum the first time that they said, "Oh, there were mistakes in the underlying bill." Yes, that would have killed souls to the polls. That they admitted that, or at least admitted a mistake, in their words, that there was somehow a provision in the bill that would have overturned the election of the people, right? A democratic election could be overturned by a partisan judge. They admitted those things needed to come out. And most recently, even at a hearing of the Subcommittee chaired by Chair Raskin, a member of Congress from Texas, former member of the Texas Legislature, looked at his phone, turned to the Democrats who were testifying before the committee, and said, "Oh, no, no, guess what? You are right. You are right about further provisions in the bill, and we need to fix that." Well, if we were right the whole time, why didn't they accept any of the amendments that we offered during the 24-hour hearing? Why didn't they accept any of the proposals that we came up with? And why did they want to continue to pursue the big lie? They know they're on the wrong side of history. They've admitted that they're on the wrong side of history. They've admitted that their bills are flawed, and when we go back, whenever that is, and we have to engage on this bill again, we want to make sure that a bipartisan bill comes out, something that strengthens the right to vote, something that protects the freedom to vote for millions of Texans. And we feel like, again, I will say, as I said in Spanish, this was a good fight, this was a just fight, and this was an American fight. Thank you. And next, I'd like to introduce the Chair of the Texas Legislative Black Caucus, Nicole Collier.
My name is Nicole Collier. I have the honor of chairing the Texas Legislative Black Caucus, a bipartisan, bicameral organization committed to addressing the issues affecting African-Americans. Today, it's a bittersweet day. Yes, we managed to run the clock out on the first special session, but we are not naive to think that we have won the war and our jobs are done because tomorrow, we will face new challenges with a new battle. So, now is not the time to walk away. No, now is not the time to throw in the towel. Rather, now is the time to recharge and regroup for what lies ahead. When we arrived in Washington, we were greeted by so many faith-based leaders, grassroots activists, and elected officials from across the nation who are intrigued by the bold action we took in breaking quorum. They heard our story and helped propel it to the forefront of the frontlines. They understand like we do that the 20-plus days that we have spent outside of Texas and away from our families pales in comparison to what our ancestors endured. They did not pick cotton or gather peanuts just to see us fall for the bait and switch. No, they laid a path for each future generation to experience a better life, a better life than theirs, and they did that with faith and courage, the courage to sit at the front of the bus, the courage to sit at the counter, and the courage to go to jail because they spoke for equality. And today, we pull from their courage to speak out and stand up for our freedom to vote. Communities should not have to live under leaders who do everything in their power to prevent local counties and cities and school districts from protecting Texans from COVID-19, or who penalize businesses who stand up for social justice, or leaders who use retired teachers as pawns in their game to retain power. No, communities should be able to elect the candidate of their choice, one who takes a stand against the hypocrisy and ignorance of injustice, one who puts people over politics, people over titles, people over positions. This war is bigger than any title or position any one of us could have. So, when you stand for nothing, you fall for everything. So, we will not be fooled by the wolf in sheep clothing for this special session. We hope Texans see the actions of our governor for what they are. They're just political grandstanding to appease a few while disenfranchising thousands. As long as the rights of black Texans are under siege, we will press on. We will fight until the war for our freedom to vote is won. It is my honor to introduce a man with plenty of courage, from San Antonio, Texas, the Honorable Trey Martinez Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Collier, Dean Thompson. I'll go with you all anywhere. I want to start off by talking about a couple of daughters. Lucy Baines Johnson, the daughter of President Lyndon Baines Johnson, put this pin on my lapel a few days ago and told me a story about how she would never dare speak for her father in life, and she hesitates to speak for him in death, but that she knows that as the Supreme Court has ripped out pages of the Voting Rights Act, page by page, that her father's legacy is on the line. And her charge to us is to live up to her father's legacy, to continue the fight, to be the support that we need for Senator Merkley and members of the US Senate, and that our job is not over, and I told her she was right. This morning, 10 minutes before this conference, I spoke to my 12-year-old daughter, Francesca, sent her a picture of the Capitol to let her know where I was at, and she said, "Dad, I heard you on TV last night saying that if Congress is here, you're going to be here, and you're going to stay here until Congress goes home because it's too important. We need a vote on the For the People Act before the August recess." And I said, "Yes, dear, that's correct." And she said, "Dad, I'm proud of you." And it's my hope and my dream that one day, my daughter is pinning somebody else, telling them, "My dad fought for voting rights, and we're going to hold up to the legacy of my dad and President Johnson and every hard-working American in Texas that believes in our democracy." We have said very, very clearly that our job was to come rally this nation. We knew that the eyes of the nation were watching us in Texas, and we knew we had to be bold, we knew we had to have courage, we knew what happened in Georgia, we saw voices get silenced, we saw voices get silenced in the state of Florida. We were warned, we knew what was happening, and we had to make a choice, and we chose to fight. And we chose to bring that fight here to our nation's Capitol, and we wanted to rally this nation because we believed that if we did, we would make so much noise that not only would the US Senate hear us, they would also act. Just this week alone, over 100 lawmakers from 25 different states came and stood shoulder to shoulder with us and rallied with us and rallied with Senator Merkley and Senator Klobuchar and Senator Booker and Senator Warnock and Representative Sarbaines and committed to finish the fight. And so, make no mistake, we do not telegraph what our plans are, but do not be fooled. If Congress is in session, we're in session, our job is here, and we will have a significant number of members staying here and waiting day by day, engaging day by day, finishing the fight, being here for our US Senate to provide the support, to provide the engagement, to work with our partners, and we need a vote on the For the People Act before the August recess. We need to see that bill filed in the coming days. We want to see a debate. We are encouraged by Leader Schumer expressing his desire to have a vote before the August recess, which might get extended. We are encouraged by the administration, President, the Vice President, Speaker Pelosi, and Leader Schumer saying they have reaffirmed and reaffirmed and reaffirmed their commitment to voting rights. We need to all have the same resolve that the US Senate has. We need to encourage the administration to continue to speak out and be bolder and be stronger, and we certainly need to encourage and support our US House of Representatives as they move forward with the John Lewis Advancement Act and making sure for the record, if you need to have a record about voting discrimination in the history of this country, come to Texas, we can fill you in. We're here because of voter suppression. And so, whether we're in this voter suppression session or some future voter suppression session, our minds have not changed. Our resolve will continue. The grit and determination you heard from Chair Collier will remain with this body, and we will see this to the end. And when history is written, as Dean Thompson has said, there are 57 spark plugs that lit this engine, and we know that the role we are playing, whether we have chosen this role or not, this is the job we have, and we will finish it, and we're going to finish it strong.
Thank you.
And with that, I have the pleasure of introducing a chief partner of ours, Ms. Valerie Long, the Executive Vice President of the SEIU.
Excuse me. I brought a little tear to my eye about that 12-year-old. I have five grandchildren, and I said to the fierce leaders from Texas that I had the pleasure of meeting today, that your fight is going to make it possible for my grandchildren to have a life that is free and they have the right to vote. I stand on the shoulders of my grandparents, who, like the Dean said, had to pay a poll tax, had to count beans in a jar... tax, had to count beans in a jar to be able to have the right to vote. That's not right in this country. And I am so proud to be standing on behalf of all of our 2 million members in SEIU to stand with this delegation, with the leadership in the Senate that stands for democracy for all of us. I also would be remiss if I didn't thank our SEIU local Texas leader Elsa Caballero for being in partnership in Texas and fighting every day for this urgent attack on our freedom to vote in Texas. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to represent our union here. It was truly inspiring over the last couple of weeks to see activists like the Workers' Defense Project, the Texas Organizing Project, Mi Familia Vota, and state legislators from the Texas delegation come together to strategize and act and hit the streets to defend our freedom to vote. On this day, the 56th anniversary of the Voting Rights Act, it's more important than ever to take a moment to be very clear about what's really happening here. It's about the freedom to vote for black, Latinx, API, indigenous, disabled communities. And the forces against us see the power when we come together. They see that power, and they're trying to thwart it. They also see the power, and they also try to thwart the power of working people. It's all connected. When working people have unions, there's more power. Our communities rise up. But the forces of evil, I will say, want billionaires and rich and healthy corporations, over healthy corporations, to have the power. It is really that simple. Let's not forget that that is the larger plan at stake, that the politicians who suppress our voting rights also suppress unions. And this coalition is much more powerful, with the grace of God, to be able to withstand that. And all about Governor Abbott and others in that circle of evil, we'll be defeated. Because I have a great faith. I have a great faith in the communities that we are privileged to represent, this leadership that's here that are like ain't playing it and are going to make sure that they go to the mat on behalf of all of us. And just to all of you, SEIU is with you. We are proud to support. We are proud to be in the trenches. And every day we do that, we are saying that you're not alone. We are not alone in this country, and that we'll prevail. So with that, I want to pass it to one of those great community partners, the leader of Mi Familia Vota, Hector Sanchez. Barbo, sorry. I forgot your last name.
Thank you. Buenos dias. I'm Hector Sanchez, the CEO of Mi Familia Vota. We have the largest field operation in the Latino community promoting democracy, doing everything that we can to make this a better and more inclusive democracy. And I can tell you, it is not easy, and it is not cheap. I can tell you what it takes to do one voter registration. I can tell you what it takes to be knocking on doors. I can tell you what it takes to be talking in the tortillerías, panaderias, mobilizing in our communities. And it's not an easy task. And for that reason, we're not going to let, again, extremist right-wing politicians to take democracy away from our communities. We're not going to let them take the power of our communities away from our children, from our families, and from entire sectors that have been historically excluding from the basic right to vote. The history of our democracy is a painful one. Amazing brothers and sisters, particularly our African-American brothers and sisters that I have the honor to be training organizing. I learned what it takes. People die for the right to vote. People were murdered for the right to vote. So that's the history of our democracy, and we cannot let that happen again, not take this power away from our families. Today, we have a unique opportunity, and it's the amazing spark of democracy that this amazing delegation of Texas is shining in our nation. And as a nation, we have to ask the question, do we want to go back to medieval times and dark ages in which only certain people want to vote, can vote, the police? Or do we want to be a better and more inclusive democracy? The answer is in our hands. And this amazing delegation is putting everything on the line, as we did with other people in our history, to say, "We can do better." Everybody in this nation should have the right to vote, and it should be easy. People shouldn't be waiting six hours for the right to vote. People shouldn't be con miedo for the right to vote. We can do better. And I can tell you the personal story that you shared about your daughter or son. I hear many stories. We had the honor with SEIU, Mi Familia Vota, to host this amazing delegation in a conference. And through this time, we were able to share experiences and personal experiences. And I can tell you that there are people here that had to cancel their own weddings, that missed their own anniversaries, that missed birthdays, that missed meals with their families day to day, all for the right to vote. We cannot let this possibility to go to waste, and we have to do everything that we can to take this spark to the nation and make sure that we are a better democracy. Esta es una oportunidad histórica para asegurarnos que somos una mejor democracia, que somos una democracia que nos representa a todos. Y hoy estamos mandando un mensaje que vamos a luchar junto a estos legisladores de Texas para asegurarnos que no vamos a ser excluidos nuevamente de esta democracia. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Hector. And let me just add my personal thanks and thanks on behalf of our entire caucus to Hector and to Valerie for the incredible partnership with your organizations and your support of our efforts here over these last several weeks has been instrumental to our success. And more importantly, your voices in fighting for the freedom to vote for all Americans is what's going to make this movement successful. So thank you both very much and to all of your members. And let me just say, before we yield for a few questions, I can't express the pride I feel, and I know that all of our members feel, in what this caucus has been able to do. As was stated earlier, it's something that no one, very few, thought, especially back in Texas, back in Austin, would be successful for a week, much less four weeks. But here we are on the last day of the session. And I want to personally thank each and every member of the House Democratic Caucus who has made this day possible. Thank you all. We'll take a few questions.
Hi, Maria Rosell.
Hey, Maria.
Hi, I'm an American station. I wanted to actually ask Senator Merkley if he could give us the status of the bill and when he thinks it will be coming up. And I guess, especially since you're all here, how much credit he gives to the Texans in propelling this war?
So I'm delighted that we've made tremendous progress in developing a bill towards that all 50 members of the Democratic Caucus can sign on to. Voting is complicated. Taking on dark money is complicated. Stopping gerrymandering is complicated, and states have different traditions. And we've been working closely to bring those different traditions and understandings, all in a single vision of election integrity. I am thinking about how many members of my caucus have been moved by the voices of this Texas delegation. Because their being here brings the battle of the front line here to the Capitol of the United States. What we see in Texas are people who are trying to make it harder to vote and easier to cheat. And when I mean easier to cheat, when you establish strategies to prevent people from voting, you are cheating them out of their fundamental right and freedom to vote. Now, across the aisle, we hear, "Oh, no, no, no. We're trying to make it easier to vote and harder to cheat." Well, we know that's simply some speechwriters propaganda. But the reality, the facts on the ground are brought here by this Texas delegation to go through the specifics of what their legislature has been anticipating. Oh, a provision so that only you give a ride to three people to make it hard for buses to go from the church to the polls, to make it harder. And the provisions that make it harder to register to vote and harder to vote by mail. This is the reality. So their voices have been powerful. They've been in our caucus room. They've been in the individual offices, and they've brought that message here on behalf of legislators from across the nation, state legislators who are fighting for this freedom, fighting for this right. So I give them tremendous, tremendous credit for that.
Thank you, Senator.
And how soon do you think there will be a vote?
We anticipate that we will again try to move a bill to the floor before we leave here sometime this coming week. You never know with the US Senate how long individual things will take. And then, should we fail in that, we will have a chance over the several weeks in between returning here to try to recruit additional 10 Republicans to join us in the fight for freedom. Every one of those Republican senators took an oath to the Constitution. We're going to find out whether they really believe in the vision of government of, by, and for the people, not. But let me tell you this. If we come back and we do not have Republicans standing with us to take on the corruption in our election system and to defend the right and freedom to vote, then we will find a way, we must find a way, for a majority to stand up for this right and pass the laws across this country to protect the ballot box.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator, just to follow up on that, is it a part of reconciliation? How do you see that vote happening within the next couple of days? Because you guys are leaving after you do reconciliation.
I'm going to defer to the Majority Leader to lay out how that vote will be held. I think that's Chuck Schumer's role to describe the details.
Thanks, Senator.
Is there a collective will of the caucus about whether you should try to deny a vote for the second beginning of the year?
So, Jonathan. So I think that there is a collective will of this caucus to do everything we can to continue to defeat Republican vote suppression efforts in Texas. That's what we did in May. That's what we did in July. That's what we have done now into the first week of August, and that is our continued commitment going forward. If you're looking for us to telegraph exactly what we're going to do over the next couple of days, we're not able to do that this time. I think, you know, the governor would love us to do that, but we're not going to.
Will it be a collective decision?
That's how we make decisions. We make collective decisions. You're right. Yes. Okay. Thank you all very much for coming.
Good job.
Yeah, you too.